Seeing as how the hour is upon us of 5:30, I'd like to call today's meeting of the City Council Committee to order. Please rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Señor.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Flegenzi.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeCenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Deputy. I'm looking for the approval of the April 30th, 2019, committing meeting.
Move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Madam Treasurer, the report, Treasurer's Report and Debt Ode to the City Report?
Thank you, Chair Thailand. The activity for the Corporate Fund in the month of April, we had a beginning balance of $6,357,000. We took in total receipts of $9,83,255. We had total disbursements in the month of April of $7,490,309, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance in the month of April of $7,628,716. This concludes my report. Chair Thailand?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's Report and the Debt Ode to the City Report. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The Office of Budget and Management Contract Report.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the OBM contract report? Hearing none, we'll move on to the presentations. As far as I know, there are none this evening. That said, we'll move on to ordinances tabled to remaining in committee. We have 2017-103, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, 2019-169. Would anyone like to make a motion on any of those ordinances? Corporation Council, are any of these beyond the six-month date where a motion has been made to keep them active, where it would require action to keep it alive?
I believe that there are several that are past this month. If you would like, I can follow up with everybody from now to next meeting. Do you want to do them on?
I think that would be best. All right, moving on. Deputy Clerk, if you would start with 2019-198.
CWP 2019-198, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 20-0309, rip-wrapped material with artisan stone products incorporated in amount not to exceed $129,292.50 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All against?
2019-199, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 20-03-04, service bucket truck with Drake Scruggs Equipment Incorporated in amount not to exceed $87,773 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Alderman Señor.
Mr. Clerk, or Deputy Clerk, do we need to make a correction in the body of the ordinance where it says this contract also includes a trade allowance of $15,000 for truck number 12? And then it says truck number 112 is a 2007 Chevrolet. Is that a typo?
It's a typo.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can you just make an administrative correction? Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-200, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE 20-03-05, substation circuit breakers with Graybar Electric Company, Inc., in amount of $182,684.35 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-201, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 20-03-11, bucket truck with Drake Scruggs Incorporated, Equipment Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $103,480 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-202, an ordinance authorizing the refurbishment of south-traveling water screen for units 31, 32 from Atlas SSI Incorporated in amount not to exceed $63,782 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-203, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of relays for various substations from Wartzer Engineering Laboratories, Inc., in amount not to exceed $73,236.25 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Alderman Redpath.
Doug, this is for areas that are outside the city of Springfield, is that correct? Pardon? And is there a reimbursement or something? It says Jerome and some other places.
That's the name of the substations.
Those are ours?
They're all our substations.
Okay, so that's not, we're not giving it to another?
No.
Okay, thanks.
But this is our farm distribution relays as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-204, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement relay kits for various substations from GE Grid Solutions LLC in amount not to exceed $101,344.25 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-205, an ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of a contract with Air Gas USA LLC in amount not to exceed $1,102,860 for the purchase of hydrogen and the rental of low-pressure storage tanks for the Dahlman Generating Station for a five-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a consent for the, second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Alderman Señor.
Doug, how close to accepting IRP are you all, and why are we doing five-year contracts?
This covers all the four units.
Okay.
And it's just basically a supply, too. So if we were to decide that, you know, we're going to close a unit sooner than the five years, we wouldn't spend that money.
Is there provision in the contract that would allow us to get out of it for those particular units that we're closing?
It's only a usage, so we would not be paying out that money because we wouldn't be using it.
All right, thank you. Not to exceed?
We can get out of it, as far as 31, 32, 33, we can get out of it, it's not going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the top limit, is not to exceed?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-206, an ordinance approving payment to Consolidation's new energy gas division, LLC, in amount not to exceed $2,284,938.82 for the purchase of natural gas through fiscal year 2020 under an existing contract for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-207, an ordinance amending Chapter 50, Section 50.30 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended regarding electric utility for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion?
Could you explain this, please?
In the past, we've, I think, probably me, some of you, Alderman, but we've all kind of received complaints from different facilities about the higher cost of providing power to basically ballparks and sporting event-type places. And one of the issues is demand charge being so high with these facilities that when they turn the lights on for just a few hours, they're getting hit with a very high demand charge. And so the utilities took a look at that and basically come up with a plan to reduce that demand charge. They're using the power off-peak, so it's cheaper overall and less of an impact to the utility. And what that allows is those facilities to actually be able to provide more to the community at that point. So they'll be able to run the facilities more often. So it's not just, you know, the park district that's being affected, it's other entities as well. So there's no particular entity that's been singled out. It's for everybody across the city that were to do sports lighting according to this design. Basically, providing 85% of the electrical load is used for outdoor lighting, we're going to offer this lower rate. So all the facilities that do that will be able to, I think, be able to spread their dollars a lot more than at that point.
So it won't affect anybody else other than the sports, the sports places, correct?
Correct.
And why did we have the demand charge on there in the first place then?
I can't answer that really, as far as it's been that way since the dawn of time, as far as I know.
Move to answer.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, do we have a fiscal impact?
It's about $70,000 lower in revenue.
Seven zero?
Yeah.
Per year?
Per year.
But we're talking about this affecting basically, for the most part, we're looking at the schools that use the outdoor lighting for football, baseball, et cetera, soccer.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at the parks, we're looking at other governmental entities for the most part, other than the private schools.
And there's private entities, too, that would be affected as well, that operate fields. I know they're non-profit, but they're not necessarily a governmental entity.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the debate agenda?
Aye.
All opposed?
Public Safety, 2019-208, an ordinance authorizing a three-year contract with Dean's Fire Company for purchase of personal protection equipment consisting of pants and coats for an amount not to exceed $270,000 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-209, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in amount of $7,500 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I just want to say this is a fantastic program that has been very well received throughout the entire city, and I commend the Fire Department for continuing the program and working with all of the nonprofits to make sure that everybody who wants to take advantage of the program has that opportunity.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Public Works, 2019-210, an ordinance authorizing additional expenses in the amount of $334,306.77 to Crown Castle GT Company, LLC, for relocation of the communications tower located on real estate purchased by the city at 1903 and 1905 South 10 and 1/2 Street relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, sir.
Alderman Señor, then Alderman, Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Mr. Bod, is it Director, Assistant Director, or Director in Waiting? Are these expenses reimbursable through the rail improvement project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Thank you. Was this the tower that was originally set to go in Isles Park?
Yes.
Okay. And it was moved to this location because?
Because that's a location that worked in regards to their coverage requirements, and then this additional work is due to site remediation, management fees. We are a little low on our estimate, and so we are being reimbursed 100% through IDOT.
And will IDOT also reimburse to move a billboard? It's only $30,000.
Yeah. I believe that they paid for that through eligible expenses originally, so I don't know if they can move it twice.
We'll continue that at a later date.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-211, an ordinance authorizing a transfer of appropriation authority from the General City Infrastructure Budget Line 1205 into a new General City Budget Line 1407 to accommodate the purchase of road materials in an amount of $1,119,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
I have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, can someone explain this? So we're creating a new budget line, 1407, is that?
Yeah, what we're doing, Alderman, is we're not, this is not a supplemental, we're simply transferring money that was in the 1,200 lines, the contractual lines, over to the 1,400 lines, which is where you would buy these materials out of. The contractual lines, it was originally set up, that's where you'd pay for, a contractor come in and do overlay or something like that, but Public Works is going to do some of that on their own, and they need the materials to do that. Budgetarily speaking, it's more appropriate to purchase that out of the 1,400 line, so we're just transferring a prope that you already approved at the budget over to the 1,400 line. So yeah, it is a new line because it wasn't originally there in the budget, so we're simply just creating it and transferring some of the 1,200 over.
So is it the intent for next budget season to continue that 1407 line?
I'm getting a head nod from the assistant or Director in Waiting, or whatever the terminology is. Alderman Señor said.
Okay, I just didn't want to see a new line on budget time and be foolish about what it's doing, so.
Contract maintenance is usually the 1,200 lines, as the Director mentioned, and this is 1407 maintenance material, so that's why we're modifying it this time, for better tracking purposes.
All right, thank you.
Alderwoman Turner.
That was my question.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-212, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract PW 191167 with Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating, LLC, for the construction of the Thames River Road sanitary sewer relocation project for an amount not to exceed $308,906 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-213, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 20-03-03 with PH Broughtons &amp; Sons, Inc., Truman L. Flats &amp; Sons Company Incorporated, Group Materials, Inc., Vulcan, Inc., doing business as Vulcan Aluminum and Osborne Associates for an amount not to exceed $1,078,967.50 for the 2020 maintenance materials.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Present.
All opposed?
2019-214, an ordinance authorizing execution of Amendment Number Two to an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation to extend the date of the agreement through December 31st, 2021, for the design and construction of improvements to Cockrell Lane south of Hollis Drive, MFT Section 98-00399-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-215, an ordinance authorizing Amendment Number Three and affidavit to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation to extend the date of completion of the project to December 31st, 2021, for job number R-96-200-08, obligation number AL-08215, and MFT Section 95-00361-04-PV regarding the 11th Street Extension Project from Stevenson Drive to Lincolnshire Boulevard for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second. We have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Alderman McMiniman.
Nate, what's left to be done on the project?
Closing out the final paperwork.
It'll take till December 31st, 2021, to complete the paperwork.
Hopefully it doesn't, but we're at the mercy of IDOT in submitting the final paperwork to us to pay.
So to get the reimbursements?
That's correct.
Thank you. So there's no physical work to be done at the site?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-215, an ordinance authorizing, oh, sorry, 2019-216, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in amount of $500,000 from expected developer's reimbursement to accommodate road and multi-use trail improvements for Lindhart Road, Bunker Hill Road, and Isles Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. Motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-217, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Lisa Schultz for annexation of property located at 3245 Mathers Road.
Move to debate.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if we could keep 217 and 218 in committee. There was a problem on the publication date, so it's going to end up being pushed back two weeks.
I withdraw.
So just holding, or if it could remain in committee?
No holding.
All right.
Second.
And that would be 17 and 18, they're tied together.
All right, then I believe we need no motion to leave it in committee, so we will just move on to 219.
2019-219, an ordinance annexing described property located at no address assigned, former Illinois Terminal Railroad property to the city of Springfield.
Move to consent.
We have to do debate.
Go ahead and, yes, if you would, just put it on debate, it's fine. And this is really, this is being requested by the city because there was a small strip of right-of-way that was a former railroad that the city actually owns, but it has never been annexed. So this is a technical correction, just to take this little strip in.
Move to debate.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-220, an ordinance vacating a portion of Miller Street between First Street and Second Street in Springfield, Illinois, to Memorial Health System.
Request a motion to, please, 2019-220, 221, and 222 on omnibus consideration?
For which?
For consent.
For consent, thank you. So we have a motion and a second for omnibus for 220, 221, and 222 for the consent agenda. Deputy Clerk, if you'd go ahead and read the other two ordinances.
2019-221, an ordinance vacating a portion of Union Street between Second Street and Third Street in Springfield, Illinois, to Memorial Health System. 2019-222, an ordinance vacating a portion of Union Street between Third Street and Fourth Street in Springfield, Illinois, to Memorial Health, to Memorial Medical Center.
We have a motion and a second for omnibus vote for consent for these three ordinances. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-223, an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.158(c) pertaining size of blocks at HSHS Medical Group, Kira Medical Park, for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Alderman Señor.
Yes, do we need to distinguish whether we're approving or denying the variance request under motion? Mr. Zirkel, do we need to distinguish that?
Proper thing may be to place that on debate, and then when you make the motion at the meeting, the motion would be to approve the ordinance, and if the decision is to approve the variance, because there has to be a selection to grant, this is an appeal, so granting or denying the variance. And so if you place it on debate, then the motion at the council meeting would be to motion to approve the ordinance, or to adopt the ordinance approving it or denying it.
Withdraw consent to place on debate.
Second.
Very well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is for the debate agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-224, an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of HSHS Medical Group, Kira Medical Park subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Finance, 2019-225, an ordinance authorizing a two-year extension of a contract with an initial, excuse me, payment of $160,000 to insurance agency LTD to serve as the city's health insurance consultant from March 1st, 2020 through February 28th, 2022, for the Office of Human Resources.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019, noted, 2019-226.
The question becomes then, if there's not unanimous approval to place on consent, that means it goes to debate, is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes.
Thank you. So it goes on debate?
Do we have to withdraw the motion, or just?
I think it happens automatically.
Automatically.
2019-226, an ordinance authorizing a professional service agreement with Traverse Turbine Incorporated to assist in the request for proposals and selection of a pharmacy benefit manager effective June 1st, 2019 through February 28th, 2025, in the amount not to exceed $120,100 for the Office of Human Resources.
Move to debate.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the debate agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-227, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract CS 20-03-01 with Black &amp; Company, Masco Packaging and Industrial Supply Incorporated, and office essentials for the purchase of janitorial supplies from August 1st, 2019 through July 31st, 2022, for the Office of Budget and Management, for a total amount not to exceed $200,000.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2019-228, a resolution stating the city's intent to designate a portion of the city of Springfield as a tax increment financing redevelopment project area by amending the boundaries of the Far East TIF and to include development interest within such area generally bounded by East Clear Lake Avenue on the north, South 11th Street on the west, East Pine Street on the south, and South 19th Street on the east.
Move to consent. Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Alderman Señor.
Thank you. Mayor, I thought the original western boundary was going to be 10th Street, and if it is Uh, thank you. Uh, Mayor, um, I thought the original western boundary was going to be Tenth Street, and if it is Eleventh Street, how is that boundary defined? Is it defined by the middle of Eleventh Street, or is it defined by the, the west end of Eleventh Street, and the same with Pine Street? Is it defined by the north end of Pine Street, or the south end of Pine Street, or is it defined by the middle of Pine Street?
I don't know about the middle of Pine Street, but I do know one of the reasons that we'd originally said Tenth Street is be, so that it would include both sides of Eleventh Street. That was, that was one of the first things that we did. We checked on that. So I actually, when I saw the ordinance, I thought, oh, is it tenth or eleventh? But we, we designated it as all the way over, so both sides of Ele- uh, Eleventh Street is included.
Very good. Thank you.
And I'll find out about the other.
Is that spelled out in here, Bob?
Pardon me?
Is it spelled out in the ordinance that it includes both sides?
No, but should we amend that?
This is, um, this is
Well, this is just a resolution.
preliminary
Yeah.
This is the inducement resolution that just gives general notice, and you may refer to language that says generally, generally bounded on the, uh, those boundaries. You'll end up with actual ordinances to create the TIF district. That'll be very detailed. This is simply to put property owners and potential developers on notice that if they start spending money to do projects, it's potentially reimbursable. So this is just the first very preliminary step, uh, and it doesn't have to have, there may be adjustments, you know, through the process.
That raises questions because if, if the boundary's not specifically defined, how can the businesses know if they would be in the TIF district or not, and if their expenditures would be reimbursable if they're not in the TIF district?
From a, uh, purely putting them on notice, this is sufficient. Uh, and if we end up, for example, making slight adjustments on the boundaries, this notice is still adequate.
So, I mean, and
As long as they're inside the TIF, in other words, this notice is going to allow them to, uh, take advantage of it.
Well, there are specific businesses that are very interested in the, the boundary, so if it, if it's questionable, then how, how can we make it determined so that the businesses know whether they will be in or out? I don't want there to be any question to that, especially the ones on Eleventh Street, specifically speaking, because there's, on the west side of Eleventh Street, I know there's four businesses that are very interested in, in this, this boundary, and they happen to be on the eleventh side of, I mean, on the west side of Eleventh Street.
Well, if the ultimate, um, ordinances adopt, uh, over to Tenth Street or across, uh, Eleventh, and include the properties on the other side, then they're covered by this.
Yeah, that's, and see, that's the, the point I'm trying to make. I want that if taken out. I want to, I want to make sure that they either are in it or they're not in it.
But this doesn't establish the final boundaries.
And that's what, that's what the whole question is, Mr. Zirkel. So I, I need to, I need to find out if, if it's going to be to Tenth Street, then it's definitive. If it's not going to be to Tenth Street, then we're still indecisive, and, and those businesses don't know if they will be in the TIF district or if they're out of the TIF district.
Well, there's no TIF district at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Well, in the, for the definition of the new
I understand what you're saying. We'll amend it so it does, it's supposed to include all the way to Tenth Street, so it includes, uh, both sides of the Eleventh Street corridor.
Thank you.
Motion, a second for the consent agenda. Do you want to, Mayor, you're going to bring an amendment next week. Um, do we want to move it to debate for the amendment, or do you want to leave it on consent and just amend it prior to the consent agenda?
Um, I think you could, I think you just put it on debate, and then we'll just bring a, you know, correction, uh, to the meeting.
Okay. Would the original, uh, motion? Okay, so we have a motion for debate and a second? We have a second. So the motion is now for the debate agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
General City Business, twenty nineteen two two-five, in order to amending chapter one ten and one thirty-one of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Co- City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to tobacco and persons under the age of twenty-one.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion will start with Alderman Redpath, then Hanauer and Donlin, and me.
So can you explain what this does?
This makes our, uh, city code consistent with state law.
And which is, what, is there changes that are significant that we need to know about?
Just referring to the age of twenty-one, that's the only change.
Oh, I see. So before was what, eighteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and recall, state law change, so we're just trying to make sure that the code matches the state law from, uh, rewriting tickets and so on.
But there's no, nothing that pertains to where they can smoke, and if it, uh, includes electronic cigarettes or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is just addressing right now the age change from the state law.
Thank you.
Alderman.
So it does not include the, whatever, what they call jewels and vaping, or what all that, all that stuff that's going on?
The amendment only is addressing the age issue.
It's the age. Okay.
And I guess my question is, is that, um, if it's following state law, so then the state law is, is prohibiting anyone who's under the age of twenty-one from even possessing tobacco items as well, correct? Which is what we're doing here?
Yeah, the, the ability basically to purchase and possess.
Any further discussion?
Chairman?
John, Alderman Plagenzi.
I don't see anything in here that says possess. Is that something that has to be spelled out?
It's on, it's on the other side under one oh, one thirty-one dot oh nine B. Although what I'm seeing here is that it's striking out, okay, it's just the way that you put it in there. At first, it looked like you were saying a twelve-year-old could have it, but it's supposed to be twenty-one. It's striking the one, then it's putting it in the middle. All right, so we have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Twenty nineteen two thirty, in order to amending chapter one hundred of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the definition of operator.
Move to consent.
Second. Motion is second for the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Someone explain this, so we'll, what's?
You may recall just briefly that there was a question or a, uh, issue that developed with, uh, Airbnb and the technical requirements. Um, this addresses the objection, the legal objection that they've been making across the country, uh, and specifically in Springfield, and the Airbnb attorneys are in agreement that this definition now covers them, so we don't have to have a voluntary agreement. They're going to be bound by our ordinance, which is what we want and what Chicago, uh, also started out with, originally with a voluntary agreement. They then amended their ordinances, so it's mandatory, so they don't have to rely on a voluntary agreement that can be terminated at any time. So this is to address the, uh, argument, the legal arguments that Airbnb has been making throughout the, honestly, throughout the country, uh, and is a better, uh, result for the city to have it in our city code where they potentially could be, uh, liable for enforcement, whereas under the voluntary agreement, they're not liable for that. So this is a technical correction to catch by definition, to make certain that the, uh, hotel motel tax arrangements do apply to Airbnb, which they have disputed in the past.
Real quick, do we require Airbnb's to get a business license in the city, or is that, is that a requirement, or?
I, I do not believe they're required to get a business license, uh, in the city because they're actually a, uh, a foreign, uh, company. They're not actually physically present. They do business here via the in, via the internet.
But the individuals don't have to?
That is correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Twenty nineteen two thirty-one, in order to amending chapter one oh two of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to urban forestry.
We have a motion?
Motion for debate.
We have a motion, a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Can I, can I just get a copy of, first of all, could somebody describe what this ordinance does, and can I get a copy of the, uh, exhibit A that's redlined? I can't tell what's the new language and what's existing.
Yes.
And I guess I follow up with the same question of what exactly is this doing? Are we establishing this entire chapter, or what exactly is going on?
This is, this is addressing changes to what was, uh, in the past referred to as the tree commission, and it's trying to update this, um, ordinances section, but basically, essentially, all of this exists with a few changes, and I apologize, that's, uh, uh, the printer didn't pick up the red, so I'll get that for you and, and scan it and send it to you. Uh, but essentially, it's an update of the prior tree commission and tying it more to, uh, the urban forestry concept, and so, uh, it's, uh, primarily related to really technical changes to make this more workable and more efficient. But I will get you the, uh, redline so you can see this was formerly the tree commission. It did exist. This is an update to that section of the city code.
Very well. Uh, Alderwoman Turner, then DeSenzo.
So, um, so this replaces the tree commission? There's no longer a tree commission?
Um, in the future, assuming that this, uh, proceeds, it would be the, uh, Springfield Urban Forestry Commission, not a tree commission. And it has to do with, uh, basically the, uh, hope to update this and how they'll work with the arborist and so on.
Okay. But this, uh, one more question, sorry. Um, does it take away any, any other substance of what the tree commission was basically responsible for?
Um, I would say that it's, uh, primarily similar, but it's updating the way it would be used, and I will get you the redline that'll show you that.
Okay.
And I apologize for that. I didn't realize it was all, uh, mono, you know, all in one color, so I'll, I'll get the one that's got the red on it.
Okay, I was just asking because over the last, like, month or so, there's been a lot of interest in the tree commission.
Wrong push.
Alderwoman DeSenzo?
She asked what I was going to ask, so.
Alderman Proctor, then the mayor.
Yeah, I guess my follow-up question, what, what was wrong with the tree commission? Why, why changing it? What, why didn't it function, and what, what did it not do that you wanted it to do that it didn't do? I guess because there's no members on the commission?
Actually, uh, you can come up, Nate, if you like, but, uh, the tree commission went by the wayside when Springfield Green Initiative came into place, and so when we reestablished that, we're trying to integrate both of them within the code and just, uh, you know, come up with a strategy with regards to trees, but also, uh, landscape development along the corridors, things of that nature. So really, it's improving the warding so you have the actual, the codifying of the Springfield Green Initiative within that urban forestry.
Hit it on the head.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Nate, uh, two citizens spoke to the city council regarding the, uh, tree commission and, and, and appointments to the tree commission. Were those two individuals involved with this particular, um, proposed code language, and, and have they seen it? Do you know?
No, I don't believe they've, they've seen the ordinance this time, unless it's on the website.
Could you make an effort to, um, make sure that those two citizens that spoke to the council are alerted to this amendment to the city code and have a chance to review it?
I can do that.
And is this on consent or debate?
It is on debate.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the debate agenda?
Aye.
All opposed?
Twenty nineteen two thirty-two, in an ordinance amending chapter ninety, section ninety point one five of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to class L liquor licenses.
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table. Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion allowed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Noted. Twenty nineteen two thirty-three, in order to incre- to increase the number of class E liquor licenses by one for Mecan Cafe Incorporated, two, for the business located at thirteen oh eight South Second Street.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Noted. Twenty nineteen two thirty-four, in order to approving the appointment of Beverly Christen to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion for consent. Motion for debate. Thank you.
We have a motion for debate and a second. And
I believe there's amendment one. We have to still, uh, make a motion. We, uh, we adopt amendment number one.
Second.
And essentially, that, just very quickly, that is a, just a technical correction because this, uh, individual would be, uh, serving out the term for a, a different person was designated, and that was just a typo on our part. So this is just to correct it, so we have the dates correct, is what amendment one references.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Now we have the, the ordinance as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we move on to unfinished business. Alderman Redpath.
Val, could you give us an update on the hotel project at Fourth and Washington, please?
I spoke with Mr. Williams last week, and to my knowledge, there was still some legal work that's working between legal counsel and their, their, um, their, um, legal team, so.
But it's progressing, correct?
It's progressing, yes.
My concern is, is that we're, we've, uh, committed to tie up TIF money, and I just want to make sure if, if the project's slowing or stops that we, that we are made aware of that.
Right, and that, that's what I know at this particular point, where we've received all the information. Um, we'll be coming forward to, uh, expand the enterprise zone also, and so we're working on that. We've gathered almost all the information for that.
You feel comfortable with their progress?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
Further questions?
In my years on the council, this TIF ordinance was handled differently than all other TIF ordinances, in the sense that the city council never saw a redevelopment agreement at the time we passed the ordinance. And I just checked with our city council coordinator, uh, Griffin. He says there's no redevelopment agreement on file with the, um, city clerk at this point in time. Is that accurate now?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I, I'm gonna, I voted no to this ordinance for several reasons, but I think it's very inappropriate for the city council to pass a TIF agreement, and we don't see the redevelopment agreement between the city and the contractor. I think that's a unacceptable practice, because we don't know what we're voting for if we haven't seen the redevelopment agreement. And then question number two. I've asked for clarification regarding whether Alderman's, Alderman Donlin's ordinance that we passed a few months ago is incorporated into this TIF agreement. We voted nine to one. Um, I was in favor of the Alderman's ordinance that said that we don't distribute any TIF money until the entire project is completed. Now, this hotel project, which is a sixty million dollar project, had language in the TIF agreement that says that the city council approves up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the developer to purchase what's called the station clubhouse at the front end of the, of the transaction.
Once, once funding is complete, yes, once they've got their funding in order. And if I recall, did the ordinance not say?
Well, I'm not done yet. The, the point is that, um, Alderman Donlin's ordinance says that at the completion of all the construction work, it's, it's broader than just financing approval has been received. It says that we don't pass out TIF money until the entire construction project is completed. So my, my question is to the council is, what's the position of the council, council on this? Are we going to pass out
One moment.
up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Alderman Donlin would like to answer the question of his ordinance.
He can answer it when I get finished. The question is, will this city council is going to allow four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be passed out to the developer, so the developer can take ownership of what's called the station clubhouse before, uh, anything else has been done. So that's my question.
Alderman Donlin.
I think to give the legal opinion, it's appropriate for corporation counsel. However, I'll give you my take on, on what was passed originally, uh, the ordinance you're referring to, and then how it's applicable to the project you're discussing, Alderman. And that is that, uh, I think the spirit of the council was that the, uh, the developer would, once an agreement is in place, would purchase the property and, uh, uh, be reimbursed for that purchase, and then the significant, the over seven million dollars of potential TIF reimbursement would not be made until the project is completed.
So you're saying it's okay to pass out the form?
Is that correct? Um, the corporation counsel, the spirit, I mean, I may not have it precisely, but I think that was probably a pretty succinct way of describing what happened here in this chamber.
Well, just, just briefly, the, you may recall that the, uh, TIF commitment was tied to their ability to actually get their financing,
Right.
which they have not done yet. Uh, they've indicated they're working on it. Uh, however, that has not been accomplished. Uh, second, the, any monies, actual monies would be tied to the actual ability to perform, which they don't have yet, and the, uh, if you recall, the council had approved the increment only And the, if you recall, the council had approved the increment only from their projects. So if the project's never built, they don't get anything.
Right.
So it's a, it's, it's a little bit of an unusual, or I shouldn't say unusual. It's a little bit of a different approach than has been done downtown in the past. However, it's a little bit similar to high V where they get future increments. But they can only get it if they actually perform. So that would be after the project is complete and count on future tax payments. If they don't make the tax payments, then they wouldn't get a reimbursement.
Well, I'm, I'm still, I'm addressing the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As I understand it, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be passed out prior to any construction under the way the ordinance was written. Is that correct, Mr. Corporation counsel?
The money would be tied to their ability to actually perform when they actually have the fifty million dollar commitment to start and perform the project.
So that's before the construction, is that correct?
That is before the construction is completed.
So I, I've got a serious problem with that. I think it's, it's dangerous. I think there's no reason we should give free money to a contractor who then can retain, take the free money, purchase the building. And then ultimately, if, if the financing falls apart later in time, like it happens with other projects, like with Rick Lawrence, et cetera, then the developer now has got a building free and clear that the city paid a hundred percent for. And that's unacceptable as a policy. It's, 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 uh, it's just not the right way to do things. And again, as was mentioned the night we passed this, we've done no appraisal of the building. And so, Mr. Mayor, you and I have had a private conversation. I think you agree yourself that we need an appraisal to establish the fair market value of the, what's called the club station house before we pass out any money. But we shouldn't pass out any money again for that building until the constr, to, to honor Alderman Donlin's ordinance. We should stick with our plan that we don't pass out TIF money until the project's completely done.
Alderman Redpath, if you'd allow Alderman Donlin to respond first?
Yeah.
You know, ideally, Alderman, I, I, I think you're, you're correct that in an ideal set of circumstances, we would have a redevelopment agreement that we could review so that we wouldn't have to have this very conversation because it would be spelled out in black and white. But unfortunately, that's not where we are. And I think, I, I agree with you that I sure would like to see a copy of that redevelopment agreement. But I, I, I hope that this project is successful. I hope the financing is, and that we take our steps towards the reimbursement because it would be an, a multimillion dollar boon to the downtown economy, let alone the city as a whole. And, uh, but I don't take your comments lightly about the, about the redevelopment agreement. It, it's, it's, it would be, I think it's, uh, corporation counsel would love to have redevelopment agreements before we have an ordinance from, from now on, if possible.
It was my understanding that the, the initial draft was, I'm going to check that, was actually filed with the ordinance?
It was.
But I will check it. It was on file at the clerk's office, the draft.
Yes.
But you may recall that during the discussion, there was a, uh, there was discussion during the various meetings about the exact timing and whether or not some of the scope of the work had changed. And that's what I have been trying to pin down with their lawyer, is what's, has there actually been a change that would be substantial enough that it would require further action? So that is the information that I've been waiting on. And the attorney has indicated to me that they would have information back within the next, I thought they indicated. I don't like putting words in people's mouths, but sometime this week, but I haven't seen it as of yet. And that's the current status of it.
You know, counselor, I'm glad you said that because it, I'm not as young as I used to be and I, I tend to, I tend to need my mind refreshed. And I remember that vividly now. I remember Val, you making sure that, you pointed out specifically to me in writing, I, I remember it vividly now.
Thank you, thank you.
About, about the unique arrangement with this redevelopment agreement because it does indeed require the development to actually happen, get on the tax rolls and start generating money to, in order to be reimbursed for a potential seven, over seven million dollars. They don't build it, they don't complete it, they don't get reimbursed for that significant amount of money.
Right.
That's right, thank you.
And Alderman McMiniman, there was a redevelopment agreement filed with the clerk when I filed the ordinance, there was. Whether or not you received a copy, that I don't have any...
Yeah, that particular redevelopment agreement went to the clerk's office, the clerk signed it, and then he sent it back to the mayor and the mayor didn't sign it. So we're really in limbo with that. And that's the information I got based on a request. I was, their council coordinator. Go and review whether we have a finalized redevelopment agreement and going to...
I believe the mayor signed it, I believe it was sent to their attorneys and has not been sent back signed by them.
Yeah, it was a draft.
It's a draft.
There, there, there was a, there was a original developer's agreement, draft, that was pla, that was placed on file, as mentioned in the ordinance. It's on file in the clerk's office. However, that draft has been subject to further discussion because of the issue about the description of the project.
Adding additional park.
That, that, the exact timing, it's the details of it we're trying to get nailed down. And we're still, uh, very, we're waiting on some information back from that developer, or from the attorney.
So that's the point I'm trying to make, is that we don't have a final redevelopment agreement.
That is correct. One that the mayor or clerk has actually signed, that is correct.
And as far as the point Alderman Donlin just said, we are going to, according to the way that ordinance was passed by the council, we are going to pass out up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of TIF money before construction. Do you agree with that, Alderman Donlin?
I agree. The ordinance provides for steps, and one of the steps is that, from what I recall, is that if the developer is able to purchase that property you're referring to, then they would be reimbursed for that. And then, which is four hundred, around four hundred thousand dollars. But the project reimbursement were, as a whole, is over seven million. So a, uh, that's well over a super majority. And if they don't complete it, I hear what you're saying about the, the ordinance that I, that I initiated a few months ago. And it, it also has language in it that says unless otherwise approved by the council. The part that the council approved overwhelmingly was the ordinance. And you're describing it correctly as far as the reimbursement goes.
And may I also say that, just, just by way of some assistance in this, you may recall that the, there was a pretty substantial discussion, which we are carefully following, was that the final financing had to be in place. That means there will be a closing with escrows and money and so on. And even then, in relation to the ability to transfer city property, there would have to be a further ordinance relating to that part. But there are rights of reverter, meaning if they don't complete, then any property has to revert back at our option. So there's some complexity to this, but the very cornerstone of the entire thing is their ability to get the financing in a form satisfactory to the city with the guarantees, escrows, like you would any normal construction project, meaning the money is actually there and available to perform.
Alderman Redpath?
Wow. A lot of my questions were answered because I, I, I think that, you know, our, our initial intent was, with the initial ordinance was to, to show our support for this project. I'd, I'd been talking to Val through this whole process to figure out how we're going, how it's going along. And I, I feel confident that the redevelopment agreement is going to be presented to us in one, one part of this step.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then Alderman McMiniman has a valid point about the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But what that means is that the developer has, has signed an agreement with another party that's not associated with the city. Even though we are given money for that point, it's not our business what they do with that. Now, if for some reason this deal falls apart, and corporation counsel can say this, if it reverts back to us, we assume all that property. Is that correct, corporation counsel?
Correct. They, they're, the, part of the difficulty with this entire, I shouldn't say difficulty, complexity is, Alderman, what you mentioned in the get-go, which is, this was meant to be a contingent commitment. Contingent on their ability to perform. Virtually all of the contracts the city typically deals with on redevelopment, the developer comes in with the financial wherewithal on the front end.
And we're, we're going to see several steps in this process, is that correct?
And, and one of the, the major step will be their ability to show, demonstrate financial capacity to perform that fifty million plus dollar project.
And like you said earlier, it's going to revert back to, we have to sign over the, the ramp to them and, and, and a lot more financing sides to this whole project, correct?
And, and for us to, to do that, they're going to end up having to have a construction closing with escrow with those monies directly available or performance bonds showing that they can actually perform. And they know that, there can't be any...
So my final point to all of us is that, look, we, I hear you, Joe. You, you, you've hit some critical points, but I still think that there's times and steps in this process that's going to give us the ability to say, no, we're not doing that yet. And with the redevelopment agreement and how the, how the two parties, how the two private parties to agree on the purchase price of that building, that's not our business. We're not purchasing it. We're giving them the, we're giving them concessions for the TIF money that we're going to give to them, but it's going to be their money and they can do what they want with it. It's not, we're not going to buy that property, it's not ours. Well, I, thanks, thanks for making those comments because I, I agree with many of those comments, except for the part where you say that we shouldn't get involved with the private transaction between the developer and the purchase of that brick building called the club station house. Why should we be involved with that? Because it's all public money that's going to be used to purchase that building. Not if it's incorporated, Joe, into the money that they're bringing up from their private entities. You, you see what I'm saying? It's, it's just one small segment of seventy million dollars or fifty million dollars that they're bringing. Chuck, that, that property by the assessors assessed at two hundred thousand dollars. But in our ordinance, we said that the, we will give the developer up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase that building. There's a problem with that arrangement. Well, maybe, maybe that's part of the section that we need to change so we don't identify that money as going to that. They can make their own deal with them as long as we give them the, the amount of money we agreed to with the TIF money. That's what I'm saying. I, I just don't think it's, it's out of our realm to be involved in the private side of this because they're making their deal. And if, if we identified that, I get where you're coming from on it. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you on that. But the most important thing is, is that we have several steps to go until we complete this project. And one of them's going to be part of the redevelopment agreement, which I feel confident, Val's doing a great job on this. She's got her plate full over there right now, but she's doing a great job on watching this thing. So I feel confident that we're going to get to that, that point where this, and hopefully this project will go forward because it's going to be really good for the city. Well, I, I thank you for making those comments again, Alderman Redpath. And I, I agree that we need to keep a watch on this project. And as I understand it, corporation counsel, when that redevelopment agreement is finalized, you're going to bring that back to the council for a vote, is that correct?
Well, it depends if there's substantial changes. I think we had talked about that. If there's a substantial difference in the project, you know, the, the magnitude of it and so on. And right now, what's really being discussed is the, both, the little bit of the timing and our position that nothing can happen until they have guaranteed funding. And though, that's the, that's the real part here that has been, if you will, much, I would say, under discussion with their attorney.
Well, if you recall on the night of passage, the developer basically promised this city council he'd add an additional layer of parking. And that would go into the redevelopment agreement. So if that is either in the redevelopment agreement or not in the redevelopment agreement, this council needs to know about it and vote on it. That's my opinion. That goes to my comments, Joe, that there's still steps to go because we all heard him say that and we agree. And that's got to be in part of that because that also offsets the additional parking that we're talking about. So there is, that's part of one of the other next steps. And you agree with that, Val?
Yes, absolutely.
Alderman Hanauer, then Turner.
We, we, we've, we've given money upfront for people to buy buildings on TIF money on numerous occasions. And we've never gotten involved in the purchase price of the building. I can count since, in the four years we've been here, numerous times that we, we've done that. And I don't think that at any point that I'm, I'm aware of that we got involved in what the purchase price of the building is. That's, I, I agree with Alderman Redpath, that's, that's, that's a private party issue to me. I mean, you know, ultimately, um, you know, they're the ones that are going to set the price. And it may be assessed, you could have a house that's assessed at, at a hundred thousand dollars, but if somebody wants to come in and pay two fifty, you're not going to say no. I mean, it's, 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 I, I think we got to be careful. And I don't know what the legal problems are, but I, I think you got to be careful if we start getting involved in private, private purchases. I think we really got to get involved, we got to be careful there.
Ralph, I may be wrong, but I don't think in my, in my eight years on the council, I've ever seen the city promise reimbursement a hundred percent for a purchase of a building using TIF money. I just don't remember ever that, seeing, seeing that happen. That's what we're promising here. And we're doing so without a, an appraisal of the property. I think that's a problem.
Alderman Turner?
Uh, I was going to make the point that Alderman Donlin may, a while back, that, um, that the ordinance that he passed had a caveat in there that said, or unless otherwise approved by the council, which is the reason why I voted against the ordinance is because everyone that, every ordinance like that, that would come before the council would have the opportunity to be assessed and voted on individually, which is what happened with, in this case. The second thing is, is that I don't understand why we always spend so much time rehashing and talking about ordinances that we've already passed. We can't go back and unpass the ordinance and pass something else. So I, I'm, I'm confused.
Well, I didn't bring this up tonight, Alderman Turner. So I appreciate Alderman Redpath bringing it up.
I just want to see this going forward.
Thanks, Chuck.
Any other Aldermen with unfinished business? Alderman Turner?
Um, so several, I think it was like a year or so ago when we were discussing the rate increase for the waste haulers. Uh, I think that there was a whole lot of discussion about that. And I don't think any Alderman was okay with giving the rate increase. But in order to do so, we did get a significant number of concessions from the rate, from the waste haulers. One of the concessions that we received from them was that for the most egregious offenders of, in, residents that did not have service, that those individuals would be, that they would be assigned a hauler and it would be placed on their C W O P bill. And I will tell you, that concession is the only reason that I voted to give the waste haulers a raise. So fast forward, I, and I don't, I don't know if other Aldermen have the same issue, but I have a residence in Ward Three that's at twenty-one oh five East Monroe. And I don't know how you could get any more egregious. Every year, I have to call Public Works, and this is not, this is not anything negative about Public Works and their staff. They understand that it's a significant problem for the neighbors. And the minute I call them, they send a inspector out, you know, usually that day. And, you know, then we end up hauling away the, all the trash and cleaning it up, and then they get assigned a hauler. And then no sooner than a month, six weeks later, the neighbors are calling again because they have just as much trash there as they did in the beginning. And I just don't think, I don't think this is a good use of, of Public Works staff time or money. And since we did get that concession from the waste haulers and C W O P, I don't understand why we can't move forward with this. I remember last year, I talked to Mark Mahoney about it and it, it just never happened. And, and I just, I feel like we really need to have that conversation because the summer season is usually, I mean, you, you're talking about four months. And it's just ridiculous that Public Works inspectors and staff are going out three times within four months to clean up someone's backyard in their garage so that their neighbors can have a barbecue.
Mayor?
Yeah, Nate can come up, but he's probably new to it. But how the process, from my understanding, was supposed to work, if it's a repeat offender, it sounds like this individual's assigned a hauler and then they don't comply and cancel it. They're supposed to be added to the utility bill if they're egregious. Yep, so we need to fine tune that process with regards to that.
Thank you. And that, that would be great because the people on, in the twenty-one hundred block of East Monroe would be extremely happy that they could go outside during the summer.
That frees up your staff to make, put more sidewalks in, man, so keep moving.
And alleys.
Oh, come on.
Thank you, Mayor, for remembering that.
Do you know, do you know how often they reconcile the, the, um, to see who doesn't have garbage at a certain location? How often is that done?
At one point, they were doing it every ninety days. I'm not sure if that still happens that way.
Is that still, you know, Nate? Because I agree, we, I, I've had situations where we've had houses that they just don't have garbage and, or they cancel it. And then the garbage stacks up in, in the side and in the backyards and things like that. And the same situation. And, you know, then you have to get their, get the staff out. So yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Alderman DeCenzo? Alderman DeSenzio.
As the weather has warmed up, just in this past week, I've had three complaints about barking dogs, and we can't do anything about it. I got one today that a dog is let out every morning at 6:30 a.m. and barks consistently for an hour. They don't have anyone they can call, they don't have anything they can do, and we have got to come up with some way to handle this situation. I've brought up animal issues in the past, and I'm not getting into roosters, but it's, it's becoming a problem.
Mayor, I'd like to comment first. Alderman DeSenzio, this is something that I brought up going back to the Davenant administration, where the wording on the existing ordinance is open to interpretation, and if it's, the way the police officers at the moment, from what I understand, are interpreting it, is that when it says 15 minutes of consecutive barking, continuous barking, that if the dog pauses to take a drink, if the dog pauses to run from one side of the yard to the other, that it starts the clock over for their observation. And I believe at one point in time that we had discussed possibly bringing an amendment to the ordinance where we would have it be observation for 15 minutes, and the dog was barking a majority of the time to where it is a nuisance under the officer's discretion. But then we were also told that the city, depending on how the city interpreted the ordinance, that the current ordinance could still stand as long as the way that it was being interpreted was being disclosed to the officers, that it didn't have to literally be consecutive bark, 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 bark for the full 15.
That's not how dogs bark.
Yeah, well, I'm kind of not all right there at the moment, but if you'd like to, you know, show me up on it, go right ahead.
No, it's all right.
You know? But Mayor, if you'd like to go ahead.
Director McCarty's working with the county, I think, to, on the contract, I believe, so that's something we need to get better clarification on. I mean, I'll use my own dog as an example, if they're just barking for a few minutes, you bring them in.
How do they bark?
It goes, and then wait, and does it again. Yeah, it just depends if someone's out there or not, but really, 15 minutes consecutively, really it's, you know, a couple barks a minute.
One?
I mean, that's it. I mean, if they're just continually barking sporadically within 15 minutes, time to bring them in.
And, but on per vote.
Well, the problem is, is that we have people who leave for work, put the dog out at 6:30, and they don't come back home till 7:00 or 8:00 at night. Or on the flip side of it, I've got some who let their dogs out at 8:00 p.m. when they head to their night shift job, and then they don't come home till 6:00 in the morning. So-
But the rule is before 7:00, you cannot have it. It's between, I think it's 7:00 to, I think 10:00 o'clock at night. 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 o'clock at night is when they're allowed out, if I remember correctly.
Alderman Donlin.
Well, Alderman DeSenzio, I think obviously from your discussion with the chair this evening, this is an ongoing issue.
Well, how did your dog bark?
I don't remember. But I think, what I would, what I think, what I would recommend is that we take a look at the code and see about actually amending it to work with the police and see what works.
There's a lot more interpretation.
Right.
Director McCarty, you asked to be recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. On this subject of county and animal control, I actually have a meeting with Brian McFadden and some animal control folks tomorrow to talk about the contract. In fact, I've got the City of Des Moines contract right here, I was reviewing tonight in preparation for that meeting. But to your point about the barking dogs, it sounds like that might be a city interpretation or code issue, so something the council may have to tackle if they want to change something. I mean, certainly the county will provide the services, but they won't be interpreting our code, I think, for us. I think we have to provide some direction.
I realize it's in the code, but when someone, when someone calls, you know, the non-emergency number about a barking dog, yeah. And it's really, you know, a waste of their time and, and resources. They shouldn't be going out for barking dogs, that's just-
Mayor.
And that's one of the things we brought up with the situation in the wintertime. I, when I talked to Brian McFadden, I said, you know, if it costs extra to have, you know, on-call individuals, what's the price? I mean, that's what we need to figure out. So that's part of the discussion that Director McCarty will have with the county.
What is the fine for a barking dog?
Oh, it's 200 bucks.
200 bucks?
I think it's general nuisance is where the fine actually comes from. That's the same thing they were having to look at for the roosters and the other things, too. All right, any other unfinished business? Okay, under new business, the first thing I'd like to do is, Mayor, I'd like to request that someone from the library come next week to discuss and present the summer library program that will start June 1st and the kickoff. I think that that would be worthwhile to have a small portion that they present to us at the end of the meeting next week. I would also like to recognize the police department, if you'd like to come up and say a few words about the Junior Police Academy. I believe the Facebook post went out yesterday announcing the signup. And I know that Alderman DeSenzio, your son has attended, my children have attended, and it's definitely a fun time.
So the dates escape my mind at the moment, but yes, it is coming up soon, and we always encourage people in the community, it's a good thing for the children to get out there. They really build kind of a teamwork environment, actually expose the kids to some of the stuff that law enforcement does. A very positive atmosphere for, you know, summer when we're looking for things to do for our children that are helpful. So by all means, if you want to go online, sign up, or have any questions, let us know at the police department, we'd be happy to help you out, but it is just around the corner.
And you guys also have the cops and bobbers coming up June 9th at South Wind Park for five-year-olds to 13-year-olds for fishing.
Fishing.
And it is also a free event, but it requires pre-registration.
Correct. And that has been a popular event created by one of our officers, Tammy Russell. She spearheaded that for some years, so kudos to her, and the kids always do enjoy that.
And I think I have the details. Eight to 12 years old, two sessions available, July 8th to 12th, and July 15th to 19th. It is a full day and provides a meal for the children, breakfast and lunch.
I think it's just more of a brunch-type situation.
But slots are limited, first come, first served.
Correct.
To briefly address the director-in-waiting, what's his name, Nate Bottom, downstairs on the board, his name is still, is still not on there, Mark Mahoney's is, but Ed Canny's name has been changed as the new fire safety, which is the other thing that I thought I would bring up. I saw on Facebook that Ed Canny Jr. was named to the position within the management level for the fire safety division, but the Aldermen were not sent any notification. We didn't get anything from the chief or from the mayor. So if we could get something, just kind of introducing us to Ed, and I, we didn't quite get to him before he escaped, I know he was here tonight, so.
He ran off. Yeah, no problem. I, that was just an oversight, I should have seen something.
I appreciate it. And like I said, you know, it's just one of those, you guys are right on changing the board, but Nate's name's not up there, so hopefully we can get that fixed for him, and at least then he'll know he has some.
Let's stay below the radar.
And then, is there anyone else with new business? Alderman DeSenzio.
This is a huge weekend in Springfield. We have the, we have Pride Weekend Saturday, there's a parade, and it goes till 10 or 11 at night. It's a blast, if you haven't gone. It is also in conjunction with the art fair, the old State Capitol Art Fair, which is a classic. I still wear jewelry that I bought there when I was 14 years old. So please go out and support downtown, and support the downtown businesses, and support the events that are going on, because there will be a lot of people down there, and fingers crossed for good weather, because it traditionally rains every time.
It's supposed to be 80 degrees Saturday.
And I, I have one last item I'd like to bring up under new business, the smoking ordinance that we had this evening, one of the things that, question that I intended to ask and did not, is did the state law cover what happens to people who already had the right to purchase and possess tobacco, who are over 18 but not 21, with the change in the law?
Can't anymore.
Because there's just some different things on this. I know, I go back and forth on how I feel about it. I started smoking at the age of 18. I smoked for 10 years, quit in 2000. It's not exactly an easy thing to quit, it is a very addictive habit, and I think that if you've got some people who, especially those that work in the restaurant industry, in a lot of cases, you know, what started me smoking was, the other guys told me, he said, "The only way you're going to get a break is if you're getting a smoke break." And that's still true to this day in a lot of the restaurant industries. And you guys may laugh, but those of you who've worked restaurants know it. So you're going to have some people with some addictions who were old enough to purchase legally and now are not, and I'm just, I know it's state law, but I'm wondering if the state law, normally when you take rights away from some, they don't normally take rights away, they usually find some way to grandfather those in who had the right before. I didn't know if this was addressed. They did not. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
Alderman DeSenzio.
Now they take a break to look at their phones.
That's right.
Alderman Senor.
Yeah, I wrestle with that too, Alderman, because we'll give a kid, 18, 19, 20-year-old, a kid, a gun when they enlist in a service to go over and do whatever they need to do with that gun, but it is state law, as Alderman Donlin says, so we must respect that. And also, with this weekend being a big track weekend, I want to wish good luck to all the high school and the middle school track athletes. Hopefully we'll have some state champions come back to Springfield.
Yeah, I saw that my alma mater, Lutheran High, the girls team is moving on past regionals, so good luck to them. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thanks for that, Herman. Last weekend was the, the small school, IESA State Track, and Springfield had, Christ King had a double winner, Paul Hartman in 7th grade. We had Olivia Redpath at Blessed Sacrament, won the 8th grade 100 meter, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, I apologize, from Springfield Christian, that won the, won the 110 high hurdles, and also their relay won. So we had some great kids, we had a lot of, lot of good showing this, this last weekend. I think Springfield Christian got third, Christ of Kings Boys got fourth, Springfield Calvary had, had some great runs, so congratulations to all those kids.
Thank you.
Any other new business by the Aldermen?
Alderman Donlin and the mayor.
Mayor, why don't you go first? That's okay.
Well, just want to remind everybody, it's National Police Week, we really appreciate our men and women in blue, and if you have not done so, I think at the Ace Hardware and Lowe's stores, they still have blue bulbs available, but really appreciate what you do each and every day for us.
Isn't it National Drinking Water Week or something, the CWOP?
It was last week.
Last week.
Alderman Donlin. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, if I, if I'm correct, it is my understanding that this is your last committee meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you've served on this council for 12 years?
Yes, sir.
And I just want to, well, first of all, I want to say that tonight is a, I think, a pretty good snapshot of the types of topics and things that can be brought before this council, whether it's budgets, redevelopment agreements.
How the proper way to bark.
You have-
That's what I'll miss most.
You have, you have guided us, you have guided us through, as chairman and as a council member, you know, good times and bad times, and I know you gave it all your heart, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the city of Springfield.
Thank you. I definitely appreciate that, and I love this city. You know, there's just something about it that this is home. Every time I've gone away, I've come back, and I love my, I love my city, I love the people here, and I want to do everything I can to make this a better place to live. That said, we are on to citizens' requests to address the committee. I believe one person who's signed up.
Edward Candy.
I don't, doesn't look like he's here. I'm going to open it up, is there anyone who'd like to address the committee this evening?
Yeah, Scott Doll's going to come up.
All right.
Let's talk about a partnership he helped with.
So last week, we had a unique opportunity present itself, and we've actually been working through it all the way until about 5:00 today, and I'm, I think it's good, right? Mr. Gorgum? I think we're good? Are we close enough?
Do you really have an announcement?
I, I do. So we, unique announcement, or opportunity presented us last week, and we are bringing to town a 30-foot statue of Abraham Lincoln and his patron. It'll sit in front of the Abraham Lincoln Museum until September 1st, 2020. It's been in Peoria for a year, it was in Chicago for some time. It's really spectacular, it's going to be a tremendous tourist draw. I think the tourists that are already planning to have their vacation here in Springfield this year will be thrilled, and will use it as a campaign, campaign moving forward to next summer. So initially, they wanted one summer, we said we couldn't do just one summer because we couldn't get our return on investment, so we are, we have it for two summers through September of 2020.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Good job.
Look for that announcement to come out.
Already made.
Real exciting.
It's in partnership with the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library Museum.
Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a need for executive session this evening? Motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. She said we actually did a couple of cases.
Hey, can you remember the full jersey, so I ordered some pizzas.